Good evening, I would like to call the October fifteenth, twenty twenty North Hills School District Committee Meeting with Action to Order. I'll begin this evening with a roll call for attendance. Ms. Casera?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Dr. Nollis?
Here.
Ms. Siltah?
Here.
Kowski?
Here.
Mrs. Reed? Mrs. Reed, you're on mute, but I can see that you're present. Um, Mrs. Renova?
Here.
Mrs. Spade?
Here.
Mr. Ritheroff?
Here.
Dr. Marino?
Here.
Dr. Williams?
Here.
Matthew?
Here.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Mrs. Pellet?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Ms. Pleischer? Uh, Ms. Julie?
Here.
Mrs. Legrasco?
Here.
And I am also present. Um, thank you very much, I'm gonna ask everybody to please rise for a moment of silence and let me... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, everybody. Um, I'd like to announce that the board next this evening, we've executed a session to discuss personnel on legal matters. Um, and before I give up to board member comments, I'd just like to say a quick but sincere thank you to all the teachers who have been working so hard to make hybrid work so well for our students these past couple of weeks. It's going really, really well, um, and as both parent and board member, I am very grateful, so thank you, and thank you to all the parents and all the students making it work as well, I think, I'm very pleased with how things are going. Do we have any other comments from any other board members this evening? Ms. Casera?
Yeah, I, um, I was able to attend Catch Me If You Can in the block at Northway, um, a couple of weeks ago. Um, it was really great to see, uh, the three members that everybody involved went through to make that happen, you know, um, because we were about two weeks... No, less than, it was several days out from, um, the actual performance before the shutdown, so it was great to be able to be back. And, um, it's been a while since we've been at, we've had a number of additional activities that have been able to occur, such as the senior tradition night at our day at Martirelli Stadium, and, um, I believe it was a band concert last night, and, um, it's, you know, I'm, it's really wonderful to, you know, think back to all of what Mrs. Mathis said, that some of the activities that we've been able to do in creative, non-traditional ways, so everybody that was involved knows, we thank you for thinking outside the box and putting all our kids, um, you know, into their heart and, um, giving everybody those opportunities.
Absolutely. Any other board member comments to be made? It does not look like we have any online or in person, so we will move on, um, next to a request that, uh, the board, I'd like to, uh, give a motion for the board to approve the minutes from the September seventeenth, twenty twenty legislative meeting?
Please, Mr....
Thank you, Mrs. Spade, um, any discussion on that? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote now, Ms. Casera? Aye. Mr. Little?
Aye.
Dr. Nollis?
Aye.
Ms. Siltah?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed, it looks like you're still muted, you're not gonna unmute yourself at all. Ms. Pellet, are you able to...
Can you unmute her? I'll try again.
Okay, Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Renova?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
And I also vote aye, thank you, motion carries. And we will now move on to the superintendent's report, and Dr. Marino?
Thank you. Um, are you gonna show the screen?
I am.
Okay. Okay, as we began the school year, um, I made the statement to the class of twenty twenty-one that we wouldn't forget about them, that it was gonna be a rough year, but there's a lot of important things that happened your senior year, wow, out of the gate, that I didn't wanna forget about. And that's where what the two of you said means a lot, because that's what the people in the North Hill School District are doing, is we're making sure that those kids get what they deserve. It's outside of the box, and it's not the way we want it to be for them, but the athletic department, the activities department, the high school offices, they're doing incredible things for this class to make sure they don't miss anything. And so, it's been an overwhelmingly successful start to hybrid, and a lot of it is because we got kids back in school, we got a little bit of normalcy happening, and we got to do those activities, we got band concerts on the hilltop last night, outside, awesome things happening for these kids. We did homecoming, different than we've ever done it before, but we got our queen, and we drove her around the field, and we did those things that are important to schools. So, to me, overwhelmingly successful as a hybrid start, it has not been easy for anybody, but our teachers, as you said, have done an outstanding job, um, our kids are interacting with their teachers not only in the classroom, but they're also interacting with them on Zoom, they're not being forgotten. I said it's very difficult to manage both platforms, and it is, but our teachers are doing an incredible job. Um, the other thing that I'm really proud to report about is the fact that our kids are wearing their masks, they're social distancing, they're doing the things that we're asking them to do because they want to be here. And so, I've seen a lot of really good things over the last two weeks, and I, I can't be prouder of our students, our staff, our parents, because it's been a rough ride, but we're here, we've got a little bit of traditional going on, but we've got a lot of normal things happening, and that's what's been really exciting, and I know when we get to the students' report, they're gonna talk a little bit more about some of those exciting things that took place, but part of that transition is its return to normalcy. And that we had annual events like we've always had, we've had our stadium review for our band, we had our homecoming, we did our sports Hall of Fame induction ceremonies, we've had our fall sports season. As the fall sports season evolved, we got more spectators to be able to come to events, which is wonderful, because, you know, the way the regulations were in place, volleyball parents couldn't even watch their children play, and now they can. And so, you can see how, as those restrictions got eased up, our last home game, which was last Friday, had our four full football team, our entire band, our entire cheerleading staff, and all of their parents here to be able to watch them participate. So, as spectator restrictions are lifted, a little more normalcy happens for us. Um, like I said about the fall bands parking lot, was on the parking lot last night, that was an incredible event for our band, and Catch Me If You Can was really neat, I was there the same night that Mrs. Casera and Mrs. Mathis were there, really neat opportunity, and I remember saying afterwards, like, that would've been an awesome live performance, it was a great show, the way they did it, they pulled it together, and the kids were able to have that opportunity on a stage, but I bet that was really awesome live, that was a great show, and it was really neat, again, think outside the box, so that those students would have that opportunity to present that live on stage. As we talk about hybrid, I think it's important to know and understand where we are with the numbers, they're not getting any better if you haven't noticed, but we're in the heart of moderate. So, right now, as a moderate in Allegheny County, we can go hybrid or virtual, and I think you know we're in hybrid. Um, so right now, if you look at this, there's two categories that keep us in moderate, it's ten to ninety-nine cases per one hundred thousand, we're in the fifties right now, so we're right in the middle of moderate, and a positivity rate of anywhere between five to ten percent. We're in the seven, eight range daily, so we're not even close to low, which is where you would be able to begin to have the conversation about a traditional school setup. So, I wanted everybody to kind of know and understand that this is the first piece of the puzzle when we start to look at the next step. When you look at the next step, this chart shows where we are in Allegheny County over the last seven days, and, and it's where I, I just said, we're in the fifties, so today we're at fifty-four cases per one hundred thousand, there's one point two million people that live in Allegheny County, so this is the Allegheny County number. So, right now, when you do the math, you're at fifty-four cases per one hundred thousand, this has to get below ten for us to get to green, full traditional, and we're at a positivity rate of seven point three percent, seven point three nine percent, that has to get to less than five, and they both have to be there, not one or the other. And that's how you get from moderate to low, which then allows us to do a traditional schooling. Okay, so those are important numbers to kind of pay attention to. As we're in hybrid, I mentioned the first time we talked about hybrid, that we're getting into the holiday season, and our calendar is about to get chopped up. So, I know Heather's done a nice job of placing this calendar on our website, so people kind of know and understand what to expect as we get into those holidays and the shorter weeks, like, for example, we have Act Eighty Days coming up, the first Monday and Tuesday of November, as we have the election held in our, in our buildings, so we don't have students on those days, so if you look at that week, Wednesday is an A day, Thursday is a virtual day, and Friday is a B day. And as we approach the Thanksgiving holiday, we are off Wednesday through Monday, so on that week, Monday is an A day, and Tuesday is a B day, there's no virtual learning. And you can see as we return from the Thanksgiving holiday, it's Monday, Tuesday, or, I'm sorry, Tuesday, Wednesday, A, Thursday, Friday, B, no virtual learning that week. So, these, this calendar's gonna become very important to know and understand what day I can be physically present in the school as we enter into the holidays in the shorter weeks. Same thing's gonna happen, January is not on here, but we return on Tuesday after the holiday, and so that will be a week that looks A, A, B, B, and we'll get to that calendar, you know, a little bit later, but right now, we have October, November, and December that's out there, so please pay attention to this calendar, so that we know what days our students are to be physically present in the school. So, talking a little bit more about the move from blended to traditional, and I talked a little bit about those case counts, which is a big part of this, but at the same time, I think it's really important to know that there's two major factors that are gonna prevent us from going to traditional or a blended model for any time soon here, and that's the fact that I cannot get kids six feet away from each other, or six feet apart from each other in a classroom as we begin to add capacity. If we did full capacities in the classrooms, if we did a blended model where they left half-day, or we did a full traditional model, I can't get them six feet apart in a classroom, I can barely get them three to four feet apart, and some of our classrooms are shaped differently than others, some of them are smaller than others, that prevents, that presents the first challenge for us. The World Health Organization says that when you get to three feet, you reduce your risk to exposure by eighty percent, but the CDC and the state of Pennsylvania is still requiring us to be six feet apart in social distancing. So, just right there, to double our capacity is not, we, we fail, we can't do it in our classrooms. And the second and most important part is the cafeterias. Uh, we had to think outside of the box to get the cafeterias to work, in the hybrid model, I think, um, in three of our four elementary cafeterias, students had desks in the cafeteria, and we maximized the amount of desks we could put in there, and so to double that capacity is an impossibility. So, there would be no way that we could have our students eating in the cafeterias if we went to a more traditional model, which is why in our blended option, they go home at lunchtime. Okay, so, right now, we're in hybrid, I think hybrid is going well, and until our numbers take a turn for the better, I think we're gonna be in hybrid for quite a while. Okay, so that's just me kind of being realistic about what I see in front of us with the numbers, the testing numbers, the cafeteria, and the classroom setups. Uh, please announce that we have a COVID tracker that you can now kind of go along with on our website, and it'll give you our, uh, our active number of cases, unfortunately, we have an active case now, I know that that was communicated out today. Under the CDC guidelines, those cases are active for ten days through a ten-day isolation period, and so that's why you can see we have one active case in six total cases, because if you were paying attention in the last six weeks, we had about five different cases that came through at different times, all of those have been communicated, uh, through Mrs. Pellet's office, and, uh, we put this tracker out there just so the people had an awareness of, this is where we are with active cases, this is when they occurred, uh, and this is what building they're located in. So, this tracker is available on our website, and if you click on that link there, it'll take you right to the tracker that you can see, um, right in front of us. So, the next category is about when will we close, so this has changed a little bit over the last couple of weeks, as more and more schools have gone into, uh, operation. So, this is basically up to Allegheny County Health Department, and so we could have multiple cases in a school, and they would not close us down, they would begin to close us if those cases are linked or a result of each other. So, the possibility exists that you have students that are positive, or teachers that are positive, that are not connected to each other, and so therefore, the department might not shut us down. And so, whenever we get a case, we have a contact with Allegheny County Health Department, we talk through all the cases, all the situation, who's close contact, and they try to contact trace that to the result of the case, if it's us, we're gonna get shut down, if it's not, there's a chance we won't. So, that's the good news about these numbers, because if you looked at the way it is just by looking at a chart, and we're moderate, and two or more students or staff members are positive, you close for five to seven days, is what the chart says, but if those two students or staff members aren't related in a case, then they're not gonna shut us down. Okay, so that's some good news about how this is gonna operate moving forward. And this slide is sort of what I just said about Allegheny County Health Department does all the contact tracing, I think that's important to know, the North Hill School District does not quarantine anybody, that's not our job, we won't contact you to be quarantined, that's not our job. Our job is to work with Allegheny County Health Department as they contact trace, answer all their questions, help them to make sure that the community is staying safe under this crisis, and they will communicate who's quarantined and why. I don't think we have the authority to tell somebody they have to stay in their house and away from everybody for fourteen days, that's not our responsibility, that's the Allegheny County Health Department's responsibility. Okay, so, uh, it's important for us to know if there are cases, because then we can help parents with quarantining and with the appropriate, um, education plans and those types of things, and I commend a lot of parents have contacted me to say, my child was in this situation, and they have to quarantine, uh, what should I do? My child was in this situation, they haven't been in the school since this date, what should I do? So, I commend those that have reached out to us and helped us through this whole thing as well, so please don't hesitate to contact us and talk, I'll be happy to talk to anybody about what they should or shouldn't be doing, and if I can't answer you, I'll give you Allegheny County Health Department's number, and they can help you with it as well. So, um, I just want everybody to know that other districts are quarantining people, that's not our job, it's not our responsibility, our responsibility is to work with the health department and educate kids, that's our responsibility, and that's the job that, that we're gonna do here. So, I've said this a bunch of times, I, I just wanna reiterate it again, our kids are in school, and I want them here, and so do you, so please keep doing the things we have to do to keep them in school, wear your mask, follow social distancing guidelines, wash your hands, stay home if you're sick, and if you can get a flu shot, please get a flu shot, because once these viruses start to mix, we're not gonna know what we're dealing with. Are we dealing with the coronavirus, are dealing with the flu virus, is it strep throat, what is it, we know that we're in that season right now, just please be cautious, and please be understanding of your own personal feelings and symptoms, and if you're sick, stay home, if your kid is sick, please keep them home, okay? And then, last on my report tonight is, I'd like to talk about our anti-racism and diversity task force, so the administrative, uh, team put together an anti-racism and diversity task force that we established in July, this includes school district administrators, school board members, community members, and parents, and we've met monthly to establish a mission, some values, and some action items. And to this date, there's several action items that have been either completed or, or in progress, and, uh, the first one is that we have a development and professional development program for administrative team with a focus on anti-racism. We've established relationships with historically black colleges and universities, so that we can attract professional candidates to the North Hill School District when we have professional vacancies. I am personally conducting a research project on the history of the North Hills mascot, the history of the Indian as a mascot in athletics, Indian mascot retirements, and the location and cost audit of the North Hills Indian mascot. I will review, we will review the district curriculum to ensure all academic content is culturally responsive, and we have begun the exploration of the PA Department of Education's equitable practices audit, I believe we meet again next week to talk about some of these action items and these action plans. Um, what I'd like to do next is, the student representatives' report is next, I touched upon some of the great things that are happening, but I wanted you to hear in more detail about those events from our student representatives, so they're up next.
Hello, everyone, I'm Hannah, Ellie couldn't make it tonight, she has a, um, volleyball practice, so, just me tonight.
Hi, Hannah.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Ellie, I don't know if you heard, Ellie can't make it tonight, she has a volleyball practice, so it's just me.
Here, hi, Hannah.
Okay, so, the first thing, so we had our, our last varsity football game, and, um, so it was supposed to be on Thursday, but they moved it to Friday to follow, we got more spectators, so everybody on the football team, and the marching band, and all the cheerleaders were able to come, because before it was just the senior cheerleaders, so I know all the cheerleaders really appreciated them being able to come. And of course, um, like, the students would've loved to be able to come to the football game, but I'm glad, we're really glad we, Ellie's got us football season, so it was glad to see everybody participate in the football game. So, the next thing was, um, homecoming court, so Ellie and I were actually both on homecoming court, so we were both here, which was super fun, and the socially distant ceremony was at Martirelli on Saturday, and there was fifty-nine members of my, the class of twenty twenty-one, and the whole marching band was there, and our, my, two, I got two guests, so my parents were able to come, and the event was streamed on, um, it was, that was streamed, and it was great, it was so much fun to have, like, still have homecoming court, even though we can't have the homecoming dance, but it was great, it was so much fun, I'm really glad we got to do homecoming. So, the next thing is the Sports Hall of Fame, it was held on October seventh at Martirelli, they were publicly recognized at last, at the last football game on Friday. So, the stadium review was for the marching band, the entire marching band took, took part, they, it was at Martirelli on October second, it was the forty-fifth year for the event, but the, and the event was livestreamed, and I know my friends and band were really excited to be able to do the stadium review, they were worried they couldn't, they weren't gonna be able to, but they're really glad they got to have it in. And so, also, I know my friends and band were so excited to have this, um, it was held in the parking lot on October fourteenth, um, the spectators were permitted for this, with, since it was outdoors and social distancing, and the concert was streamed, and the weather was so nice, it was a beautiful sunset, it was like a perfect night to have this outside. They also showed the Catch Me If You Can musical at the block at Northway, the, it was like a drive-in movie theater of the Spring Musical, because COVID canceled the musicals in March, so this is videotaped this summer, and I was actually here, and it was so fun, like, it was a great time, and they were sold out, and it was really a lot of fun, I, I was really looking forward to seeing the musical, and I was upset I got canceled, because I have a lot of friends who put in a lot of work and time for this, so it was really nice to be able to see it. And then later this month, there's gonna be a trunk or treat, um, I know all the clubs are trying to get together like a little car, like they did last year, and decorate it with the Halloween themes, and it's an annual event in memory of Jake Budorcheck, and the Student Council and Hands for Service Club sponsor it, so they try to get all the clubs involved here. It's on Saturday, October fourth, twenty-fourth, from twelve to four, so you just have to sign up to attend, and I was there last year, and it was super fun, and I'm really glad we get to do this again, because it really got that community involved, and I think it was super fun for all the clubs to have a, have a little car and decorate it.
Thank you so much, Hannah, and thank you, Dr. Marino. Um, we'll now move on to public comments on agenda items only, we don't actually have anybody here in person that signed up, but, um, Ms. Pellet, if you could keep an eye on Zoom, and, um, if anybody is participating in the webinar and wants to make a public comment, you can raise your hand, um, virtually, and I will read the, uh, public participation policy. We would like to invite any regiment, not pay our employees in North Hill School District, who wishes to address the board to come forward at this time, is our policy to strongly encourage such public participation, and as much as it provides the board with an important source of ideas, as well as the forces of many concerns for the district. The board, as we start to write, however, to limit the amount of time allotted for public discussion of any particular speaker and or issue, in the interest of preserving an orderly and effective public meeting. Personal items must be submitted in writing to the board president for consideration five days prior to the board meeting. Some of your concerns can be immediately and quickly addressed following your comments, while others may require more research and discussion. Whenever appropriate, you are welcome to further discuss your concerns with us following this meeting, we appreciate your interest. Can we have anybody who's had a break during here? No, okay. All right, then we will move on to education. The first item I have under education this evening is a request for, um, the board to approve the request for McIntyre Elementary to accept the donation of twenty-five to thirty orange buckets from Moligo. Um, the request is from elementary teacher Ellie Lamb, and the buckets are going to be used for on-bucket drumming, this is a popular topic in the general music classroom, and it allows students to practice playing and creating rhythmic patterns and accompany themselves while doing it. Um, it can then be practiced at home using household items resembling a bucket. Specifically, during hybrid instruction, students working from home can use plastic containers, trash cans, or desktops to play along, and would not require the distribution of these items prior to the lesson. Um, this is a donation from Moligo, and the cost, uh, or the value is estimated at two dollars per bucket, there's no costs in the district. Next, we have a request for, um, the board to approve the Title One Non-High School Agreement between North Hill School District and Allegheny Intermediate Union, to provide Title One reading and math services for eligible students who live in the North Hill School District, um, and are attending non-high schools during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Students eligible for Title One must live in the High Cliff Elementary or Westview Elementary School attendance areas, um, and in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, Title One allotment service, non-high school students is six thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. Uh, next, we have a request for the board to approve the letter agreement between North Hill School District and Pittsburgh Mount Oliver Intermediate Union, too, to provide Title One reading and math services for eligible students who live in the North Hill School District and are attending non-high schools during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Again, students eligible for Title One must live in the High Cliff Elementary or Westview Elementary School attendance areas, um, and the allotment to service non-high school students is six thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. We have a third request for the board to approve the Title Two A Non-High School Agreement between North Hill School District and the Allegheny Intermediate Union, to provide professional development services for Holy Cross Academy and Union Christian Academy. Um, Title Two funds can be used to provide supplemental activities that strengthen the quality and effectiveness of teachers, principals, and other school leaders. The purpose of Title Two is to provide low-income and minority students greater access to effective teachers, principals, and other school leaders. The twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Title Two allotment to service non-high schools is ten thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. Um, and last, we have a request for the board to approve the work as the operation plan for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, in my understanding, the only major revision to last year's plan is the change in our chief school police officer to Chuck Boson, Boson, um, and the authority of this document, um, is authorized by Pima and has to mine to reclaim the names of our district personnel and, uh, facilities. So, uh, the superintendent recommends, and I so moved that the board approve education items one through five.
I'll second that, please, Spade.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade, is there any discussion? No? Okay, I'll proceed with the roll call vote then, Ms. Casera?
Aye.
Mr. Little?
Aye.
Ms. Siltah?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed? Mrs. Reed, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed, Mrs. Renova?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I will also vote aye, motion carries.
Mrs. Mathis, I would also like to vote aye, I was left off the roll call.
I'm sorry, Dr. Nollis, I apologize.
That's okay, I'm losing my voice, but I'd still like to vote, thank you.
I apologize. Um, uh, next, we'll move on to athletics and activities, um, twenty plus, yeah, I see, yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, and we will move on to Mrs. Renova and AWB careers center.
Um, you know, good to report that things are going well, everyone seems to be healthy thus far, um, only other thing that I have to repeat is, I've never had... Only other thing that I have to repeat is I've never had it, but I've heard amazing things about the fundraiser through Beatty for Thanksgiving. There are three options. Orders are taken until Friday, November the 13th, or the first 60 orders, whichever comes first. And then pickup is Wednesday, November the 25th, between 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. Again, this is on the, at least the Beatty Tech Facebook page. I know that. I'm sure Heather will have it at some point through hours as well. But again, there are three full options. It's all disposable and obviously it's for a great cause, great organization. Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Brennada. I've heard really good things about what we're gonna do, so.
I'd just like to say they're delicious.
Yeah.
They do a great job.
That's all for a good thing to say. And we'll move on to personnel and Mrs. Spade.
Personnel items are discussed in executive session. The superintendent recommends and I so moved that the board approve personal items 1 through 4.
I'll second that for Little.
Thank you, Mr. Little. I'll give a roll call vote now with Ms. O'Farrell. Aye. Mr. Little?
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Stilthwaite?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Brennada?
Aye.
Mrs. Spade?
Yes.
I will also vote aye. Thank you very much for motion carries. Um, next, we will move on to Mr. Little and Community and Intergovernmental Relations.
Thank you, Madam President. So tonight's item is a discussion item for the North Hills Community Service Award. So the purpose of this North Hills Community Service Award is to honor those who are making significant contributions to our community in the North Hill School District through their time, talents, and dedication. So a little bit about the consideration, the criteria for consideration. This community service award will be given to a current resident of the North Hill School District who has made a significant contribution to our community through their time, talents, and dedication, outside of any volunteer work done to their employer. The honor should serve as a role model for compassion and service and be striving to make our community a better place. A little bit about the nominating process. The nomination forms will be available on the district's website. The nominations will be accepted annually on a deadline, a year date to be determined. Once nominations have been received, each member of the Board of Education will receive information about each nominee with instructions on how to make their selection. Just moving on a little bit farther down, the award recipient recognition. So the winner of the North Hills Community Service Award will be announced at the North Hills Board of Education meeting. The recipient will be given a plaque to recognize the honor.
Do any board members have any questions or comments on this discussion item? I don't know if I can see it in.
Um, I would like to say something. Phil, I really appreciate all the work you did on this. I think it's a really good idea, but I just do not believe it's a good idea right now. I think our administration and the board should be solely working on the fact of keeping our kids in school and our teachers working and do everything we can for education. And this epidemic is not over yet. And I, I believe that for next year, it would be a wonderful thing. But I just feel it's not the proper time.
Well, there's no exact timeline in this right now as I'm reading the criteria.
Yeah, I, but I understand from talking to people that they, it was something that wanted to be done this year. And I just wanted to give my opinion of it. I think administration and people in the district have enough work to do. Keeping kids healthy, teachers healthy, and getting our job done, which is education. And I feel another time, next year or whenever this mess is over, that we could definitely consider that because we've got a lot of wonderful people out there that probably do deserve to be recognized. So I just want my opinion to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Any other board members have any questions, comments, or feedback on this?
I guess I'll just plug in real quick, Madam President, just to give you an idea where this came from and kind of the vision of it is. Our district has a couple of awards we give out, right? We have the sports award, which we just gave out, right? For people who have done great things in the athletic fields, and that's wonderful. And we should champion those people. We also have the distinguished alumni, where again, we celebrate those people who've gone to have successful careers, right? The thought behind this is that our young people, our community, see that we are giving out awards and recognizing those people. We should be recognizing those people also that are committing and volunteering to help our community. So that's kind of the idea behind it and creating that culture that young people see that this district values. So just to give you an idea of the brainstorming that was behind this.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a nice idea. It's nice to recognize people and be ready. I think that Jeremiah DeWey has a hopeful position and consideration and they, you know, be positive that the amount of work that our administration has and do it when the time is right, but also look at what this entails.
Phil, did you have a timeframe, sorry, what did I?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Did you have a timeframe in mind to Dee's point? Did you have a, you're out of, like, cost us?
No, I don't know where that came from. I, I don't, I'm open to whatever. It's more of a discussion with my colleagues here coming out of the community to get more relations.
Right.
And bringing it here to our colleagues to let's talk about this. Because right now, as we speak, we have people in our community that have stepped up to the plate. They didn't have to, that are well worth it for this, right? And I, I think it's just so important that we recognize people because we recognize athletics as we should. We recognize people who have gone and do great things that leave here, right, distinguished alumni. But we should be creating a culture where we recognize service to this district and making this community better. You know, I, I, I wholeheartedly believe that, but I have no timeline on it. No.
Um, Phil, I'd just like to say that I agree with you with most of that, but I still believe it should be something that is put off. I think we should discuss it, get everybody's idea, and then hopefully next year we could do it. Or, but I just think this is a, it's a really busy and hard time right now. And I don't think we should be adding anything to administration's plate. Thank you for what you do.
Um, okay, well, I'm not really sure if the next steps are on this. I guess we can continue discussing this as a board. I mean, there's no motion on the table. It's just sort of, yeah, it's a discussion item.
Sure.
I think we have an idea in mind about how we would initiate this, we being the administrators. You just say when. Yes, it's going to be some work, but oh, it is what it is. That's not the reason to not do it. So it's a matter of when's the right time. I agree with that. I think we at one time had talked about, School War Recognition Month is January. For us to pull this off for January is an impossibility. That's not going to happen. But if this is something you want to do, we could quickly create a nomination system and a voting process and have a recipient. And yes, it'll take some time. Yes, it'll take some work. It's not, I don't want you to say the administration is too important or is too busy for us to recognize somebody that's important in our community doing something. It's kind of what I'm saying. You want to do this? We can do this. When the time is right, I agree with that. Is now the right time in October? No. We got a lot going on trying to piece this whole thing together. But when we're ready, say when, we'll piece this together for you and we'll do it.
I think we revisit it in January then. Maybe we talk about it, you know, in the year of school recognition.
Okay.
Figure out if that's the right time and. Yeah, I was gonna say, it seems like the next step then would be to, to put a quote to vote on together. But I felt like it was important, you know, and I know Mr. Little, the two, that we discuss it at the board before we vote on it, you know. So it's just not coming from out of the blue.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think voting on it is the next level of stuff.
Yeah, I would say I understand, I understand the concern about timing, definitely. But I would also say that I know even back in the spring, some of us had talked about, specifically, I can think of one person in our community that we all kind of talked about, how do we honor this person for the work they've done to help our community? And then, so I would, I would hate for us to miss out on, on the timing to honor that, that person. And I'm, you know, and we know there are others out there too. But I'm just specifically thinking of the one we talked about in the spring, some, several of us, who definitely deserves to be considered for this award. So I would hate to go too long.
Hello, can you hear me?
I think this is a great idea. Thank you, Mr. Little, for working on it.
Yes, Mrs. Reed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mrs. Reed. Go ahead.
I keep getting muted and my picture's gone. I thought maybe you didn't want me to speak. Okay, it was very kind of you, Mr. Little, to put this work in. However, I believe we're looking as though we're just piggybacking in on Ross Township. Because they just come up with this. And it's all too sudden. There needs to be further discussion on it. There needs a committee put together and how this is going to be voted upon. I don't believe the board members should vote. It should be taken away from them and have come up with whoever is going to vote, possibly the employees, which is all employees, but that's my opinion. I think it's too soon right now.
Thanks, Mrs. Reed. I think you should also be able to turn your camera on on your end. There you go.
There you are.
There you go. Hello. Um, well, I appreciate all the work that you've done putting this together, Mr. Little. I think it's the idea that we should continue to discuss and put something together that we can vote on. But considering that's the way they're putting it forward and.
Sure, thank you.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And I, you know, I think, I think that what you said about, you know, recognizing the community service is really important. Okay, um, moving on to policy and Ms. O'Farrell? Yay, awesome. Um, so we've been continuing going through some of our outdated, not outdated policies. Our policies really haven't been updated sometimes. So I have a number of policies that we have, that have been reviewed with no changes. A number of policies are up for first reading and then one for secondary. Um, so the following policy were reviewed and determined to change with their. 108, 231 athletic and extracurricular events in our school. And then 319, 419, 519, which will be employee assistance program for different types of employees. And 334, safety. Um, so the policies are all for first reading, I believe, and the production area can correct me if I'm wrong. And these are all standard updates that either update the, from PSDA recommendations for changes in the law or, you know, just like minor changes to, to the wording. But there's nothing that is going to change anything operationally because these are all things that we're already doing and we're, you know, kind of just like drafting our policy to reflect the necessary changes. Um, so the policies that are up for reading tonight are 223, use of bicycles and motor vehicles, 229, student fundraising, 407, student teachers, 416 and 516 headlights, 705, safety, 805, emergency preparedness, and 905, school visitors. I'm sorry. I'm seven, I'm sorry. Um, I move that calls items 2 through 9 and the others in the November 5th, 2020 committee meeting with action. There a second?
I'll seven, huh?
D. Spade, I'll seven.
Any discussion?
I have some questions about some of them.
Okay.
Let me, let me start? Okay. I'll just go down the list. They should be pretty simple questions. I just was curious at reading through them. So the use of bicycles policy, um, we say, let me pull it up. Um, we say that kids can bike to school if it's deemed safe by the building principal and the route to and from school is agreed to by the principal and the parent or guardian. So, um, so my first question is, do we have any schools in our district that have, that the kids are not allowed to bike to school, that it's been deemed unsafe?
No, I think it's a specific case per student. So if your child wanted to ride their bike to school, they would meet with the principal. They would agree upon a safe route and then we would go from there. That's really what that's about.
Okay, so, so parents, if they want to, if their kids want to bike to school, just need to contact the building principal and sit down and talk about the route?
Yes.
Okay, um, then, so then my, my question would be, um, so I talked to Kevin Swindell about this a little bit. And he said that only one of our buildings has a bike rack. And I'm just wondering, like, I know, he said it was the middle school. Um, so I don't know if at some point we want to think about installing those. Um, I know I had just been told through word of mouth that there's a neighbor near Ross where she just lets all the kids throw their bikes in her yard every morning. Um, so I don't know if we want to look into that at some point. Um, it might make it easier for the kids to bike to school. Something we might want to consider in terms of trying to limit bus participation for COVID even. Um, Mr. Swindell said it should be a pretty easy process to install them. Um, and I was just curious because I had no idea how much bike racks cost. And just the first website I pulled up said that an 18-capacity bike rack was like $500. Um, you know, not saying that it's something we need to do right now, but I was just curious how much this would cost if we put bike racks in all of our schools. Um, so it might be something to, to think about at some point to both encourage more kids to ride their bikes to school. Um, and to, if, if the neighbor story is true, to get bikes out of people's front yards near our schools.
Yeah, this is so fun. We, Dr. Mary and I actually talked about bike racks when we were looking through these policies. And he said that, well, of course, I, I don't think we were aware that that was happening, but if students do want to ride their bikes, they're able to keep them in the, in the buildings, which, you know, is a.
Oh.
If you're a bike rider, I would prefer to have my bike inside than outside, if that's an option. And if, you know, and then there's not the issue of blocks and that sort of thing. Then they can keep them safe inside the buildings, if that's.
Yep.
Like I said, I mean, I have no, obviously no issue with a bike ride, but it's just not something that's come up, you know, and then something that we've been made aware of as far as the need goes.
Yeah, no, that's great. I had no idea that they could keep them inside. That's great. Yeah, I just, I know, um, you know, every year there's a National Walk and Bike to School Day. Um, Westview participated in it last year. And, um, I know McIntyre didn't because we were worried about McIntyre Road not being safe. Um, so that's where I was just kind of wondering if kids at McIntyre wanted to bike to school. Or is, is that something that's approved or not? Um, but I guess it's a case-by-case basis. Um, okay, so we can move on from that one. Um, my next question is about the, um, emergency preparedness policy. On, and this is a general question that just came up because it's in this policy specifically. But on, on page three, we talk about, um, employees being required to complete a minimum of three hours of training every five years. And it just made me wonder how detailed we are tracking that. In, in my mind, I'm envisioning a big district spreadsheet with every district employee and what they're supposed to be trained on and when. And we're, we're checking the box every time they do it. Is that, is that something that we're doing? How are we making sure that in all of these policies that detail out all of these required trainings, that they're getting done?
Dr. Williams, are you able to address that?
Yeah, any trainings that we need to be trained on or staff needs to be trained on, we do actually do something. We use a system that does track that. Um, with these trainings, staff members earn, for lack of a better word, a certificate for participating in that. They actually have to upload that certificate. We have electronic copies of that and we have files on all of that. So we do track that very, very carefully and very closely through my office. So that is definitely a big project, but we have a nice system in place to make sure we're doing that. Ms. Stilthwaite?
Great. Um, and then also in this policy, on page four, in the middle, um, there's a section that says the superintendent or designated shall. Um, and number three there says that we will notify parents and guardians of the students attending the school building where the school security drill is. drill is scheduled in advance of conducting the drill. And I just wanted to have a conversation, a short conversation about what the intent of that line is and what we're doing in that, in terms of communication, because I know in the past, we have done, you know, our safety week is coming up, these are the days they're going to be, but for parents who, you know, and it's my understanding that we, that parents are legally allowed to exempt their kids from any drill that we might have, and for parents who do want to exempt from a certain day, it has, it has turned into, I mean, I know one time, it just was a big word of mouth throughout the district where a parent from Ross had told McIntyre parents how they needed to do that and what day it was going to be, and, you know, last year, I don't think the specific day and time was decided for one of the drills until that week. And so, it just becomes a matter of parents having to track down this information, and I just don't know if that's something we want to be more clear about in terms of when each drill is going to be, so that it's easier for parents who do want to exempt their children.
It's funny you mention that. We just met with principals yesterday in this Phil Pot, and we talked about all of that. So, information will be coming out in the weekly emails that each building gets, where we're designating what days we'll be doing the drills, what it will consist of. COVID has placed some restrictions on being able to do those drills because of social issues and things such as that. So, the drills per se are going to look a little bit different this year because of the COVID restrictions. We will be very transparent with that and explain that. We're going to run our first set of safety drills here coming in November, but information will be forthcoming for parents. It will go out into the weekly email. We can certainly, that's something we can post on the website as well, and we will do the same thing again in the spring to ensure, as you said, parents who choose to opt out of a specific drill can have that conversation with the principals, and they can make those arrangements appropriately.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Last one is a question on school visitors. So, on page two, for number five, we say that no visitor shall be allowed to photograph or videotape any person other than the student of whom he or she is the parent or guardian without prior approval of the building principal or the district superintendent. And so, I'm just, the reality of this, and I don't, I'll add, I'll say upfront that I don't know, there's a section down a little bit further that says that parental participation in classroom activities or programs such as room parents shall not constitute a classroom visit for purposes of this policy. So, I don't know if we're talking, if we're saying that holiday parties just don't count for this policy at all. If that's the case, then that's great. But I think the reality for number five is that if you're, if you're a parent and you're going in for a Halloween party, you're taking a picture of your kid and their best friend dressed up for Halloween, and I think parents appreciate that. And so, I know one of the notes that I had written down for this policy was that maybe we want to add in there, or the approval of the child's parent. I just, I just want to be clear to parents that, is that what we're saying in this policy, that you cannot take pictures of other kids if you're in there for a Halloween party or not, or is that, or are the parties exempt from this policy completely? Does that make sense?
Excuse me, I suggest in the future. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I suggest in the future, you have all these questions that you don't take up a lot of time at the meeting. Call Mrs. Cazara and try to attend the meeting. To me, you're just trying to take over time and look good. That's my opinion. I wanted to say, call the question. Call the question. You don't even have to answer her.
This is Phil Pot. We'll talk separately about this last question, but then, and then, is that all right? Yeah, so, we are, we're going to vote, I am.
You have a motion in a second.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I'm off. Ms. Cazara.
Hi.
Mr. Little.
Hi.
Dr. Nollis.
Hi.
Ms. Phil Pot.
Aye.
Ms. Housey. Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Renova.
Aye.
Mrs. Babe.
Yes.
I will also vote aye, motion carries, back to Ms. Cazara. This is a revision to policy 819, Employee Service Awards, and my revision and clarification. We received no comments on this, so, Superintendent Bennett and I so moved that the board approve policy item 11.
I will second Ms. Babe.
Thank you, Ms. Babe. Any discussion on this one? If there being none, we'll vote Ms. Cazara.
Aye.
Mr. Little.
Aye.
Ms. Phil Pot.
Aye.
Ms. House, sorry, Dr. Nollis.
Aye.
Mrs. Penny Housey. Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Renova.
Aye.
Mrs. Babe.
Yes.
I will also vote aye, motion carries, thank you, Ms. Cazara, for policy, and I will allow him back to our legislative board.
Yeah, so, I wanted to mention that we attended advocacy day, which was on Pennsylvania Department of Education, and I was able to have a conversation with Representative Sarah Emorato and Senator Lindsey Williams. Senator Williams is a member of the state education department, so, in particular, she, you know, I enjoy talking to her about education items because she really understands a lot of our concerns, and Representative Emorato also has some great insight. One thing I wanted to mention that I think is relevant to our situation and a lot of people in the district, is that the Pennsylvania Department of Education, as it right now has no plans to suspend standardized testing for the 2020 school year. So, that was an issue, and I had a team up with both Senator Williams and Representative Emorato, and both of them were, you know, very, they would like to hear from people. So, you know, if you have concerns about standardized testing, I would rather recommend that you reach out to them because they may be able to help us relieve. As a stand right now, our district is looking to be receiving information from the Pennsylvania Department of Education on how to put on standardized testing in this. Some people are virtual, some people are hybrid, some people are pool, you know, day to school, and that's not standard. So, I think that it's, you know, it's something that is going to be a struggle for not only our district, but districts across the state. So, if that's something that you feel strongly about, I would recommend that you contact them, because it's definitely not something that's coming from our district, it's coming from the state. I did align with that, the Pennsylvania Department of Education on their annual conference every year around this time, and we virtually this year, some of us attended the session yesterday and today. It was not the same as meeting in person. It was somewhat interesting educational, but it definitely wasn't to the level that it's been in person. So, don't know that we, you know, have a whole lot to bring back like we usually do, but it was good to kind of keep the situation going, and hopefully next year we'll be able to see them in person. So, that's all I have on legislative for this time, not everyone was there on anything I hear.
Ms. Cazara. Yeah, I mean, you guys heard me just before, I don't, there's no standardized education across the state right now, so I don't know how it does get tested, because that's really disappointing. Okay, so, Dr. Nollis has a little bit of layering right this evening, so I'm going to go ahead and run through the financial items, and then I'll let her make a motion. So, the first item we have under finance tonight is the general fund bills. The second item we have is the tablet project fund bills. The third item is food service fund bills. The fourth item is budget transfers, and the fifth item is motion for the board to approve payroll for the month of September 2020 in the amount of $3,052,891.94. Okay, Dr. Nollis, I'll hand over to you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Mathis. Everything under the budget this month under finance is very standard, so unless anyone has any questions, the superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve finance items one through five.
Can I second?
I'll second Ms. Babe.
Any discussion? Okay, if being none, we will vote. Ms. Cazara.
Aye.
Mr. Little.
Aye.
Dr. Nollis.
Aye.
Ms. Phil Pot.
Aye.
Ms. Penny Housey.
Aye.
Mrs. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Renova.
Aye.
Mrs. Babe.
Yes.
We will also vote aye, motion carries, thank you very much, Dr. Nollis. Next up, we have Ms. Phil Pot and the Board of Services.
I have an informational item tonight on our testing results of lead levels in our water. So, to prevent exposure to lead contamination in the drinking water of Pennsylvania schools, the public school code was amended in June of 2019 to encourage schools to test for lead in their drinking water, to require schools that do not test to discuss lead issues at a public meeting, and to implement a plan if results exceed the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's national primary drinking water standard of 15 parts per billion. In the fall of 2020, the North Hill School District tested 25 domestic water distribution points throughout all of the district's facilities. All samples were below 15 parts per billion, which is the federal EPA limit. All samples were less than one parts per billion, parts per million, except for the middle school teacher's lounge, which was 1.4 parts per billion. Only distribution points above five parts per billion need to be changed.
If you still have any...
You're welcome.
Dr. Nollis? Okay, we'll move on to any color comments on non-agenda items only, as I mentioned, we have nobody here in person, but if anybody who has participated using wants to raise their hand virtually, Ms. Phil will bring you up for comments or questions. So, we'll give you guys a minute to do that. Okay, it looks like we have no comments or questions this evening. So, I would just like to announce that next meeting, the Board of Education is scheduled for Thursday, November 5th, 2020, 7:00 PM. We are going to keep it in the hybrid class, which, I mean, we did it tonight, so it'll be in the middle school LBI room and the EAS room. That's what we said, I will move on to the meeting. Thank you.